Any questions or discussion? We have a consensus to give the city manager the, uh, the authority to execute this purchase? All right. We're gonna go ahead and move on to item six, discuss authorizing city manager executed purchase order with CWA government for the replacement of city's V M ware infrastructure storage and backup system, Mr. Flores.
So this is gonna be our, um, infrastructure for storage where we hold all our, um, virtual servers. Um, so we're gonna have two, one at City Hall, one at, uh, PD. These are designed to be redundant and, um, expandable, so the future proof will actually, so if one fails, it can fail over to the other one, so we'll, we don't really have that redundancy right now, if one fails, we're just done. So this is gonna kinda have our first step of true redundancy. We're also packaged, um, we're gonna replace our disaster recovery backup software. So this is gonna go into the cloud, so right now our disaster recovery is basically within seven or eight blocks between here and Municipal Plaza. This is actually gonna go to the cloud and then we're gonna have redundancy backups, um, on the west coast and east coast of the United States. Um, this is also gonna air gap us, so if we get any kind of ransom where our backups will be safe. But this is gonna, this is kind of an, our, our, a nice step into the future as far as kind of protecting the city and doing redundancy and backup.
Is this backup for data and, and power or just power?
Oh, no, this is just backup for data, yes, and so any kind of data that we want backed up is no longer just gonna be at Municipal Plaza or City Hall, it's actually go into the cloud. And I think, uh, some of it's gonna be, we'll be able to retain some backups for two years, it's kind of, um, not everything, I mean, we'll have points, cause I mean, two years for every, would be way, would be, it'd be, I mean, be incredibly expensive, but we'll, we will have restore points of one to two years for extreme, extreme.
Yeah, this is a quick question, Mr. Eric Flores, you were saying that it's gonna be stored in the east coast and the west coast, so that same data, just in case something happens in the west coast, we have the backup in the east coast or?
So, yeah, so it's the back, the disaster recovery is really that, like, if there was a disaster, I mean, you would assume it was a true disaster, City Hall and Municipal Plaza would both be down, you know, an earthquake, something of that magnitude. Um, so now we will have something that will be, if it affected central United States, right, we would still have west coast and east coast. So it's just to spread it, it's just so it's, the locations are far apart, so I mean,
Okay.
For that specific reason.
Basically what it allows you to do is, in addition to running normally and, uh, risk management's been involved in asking some of these questions, is if you've got an internet connection, you could come up with some kind of functionality anywhere. That basically is what it allows you to do. Is it gonna be perfect? No, but there's perfect and there's getting by, and this is getting a little better than getting by.
Yes, sir.
Tony, who's providing the cloud service?
Um, Dell, so it's a Dell, um, Dell product, um, they, they call it different names, I think the old name was Apex, but here it's a Dell Power Solutions. Um, so they'll, they'll actually do the, um, housed, uh, it's gonna be their cloud, but it's also on AWS. So it's AWS storage, but Dell's gonna actually do the, um, architect and make sure that we're air gap and things of that nature.
We're trying to buy Texas based when we can.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Do you have a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, we're gonna move on to item seven. Discuss the, uh, discuss award a bid for twenty twenty-four seal coat job. Right, how you doing, sir?
Good.
Roads, we're talking roads.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, this item is to consider order bid for twenty twenty-four seal coat. The bids for this project were opened on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, and two responsive bids were submitted for, for this project. The lowest responsive bidder was Ronald Wagner from Kendalea, Texas, in the amount of two million nine hundred fifty-four thousand, uh, thirty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. And the purpose of this project is to seal code approximately eight hundred three thousand square yards of major and minor arterial streets, which is approximately twenty-two point seven linear miles. And I'll be happy to answer your questions.
All right, show, go through the process, is this where we're gonna lay down emotion, tar and gravel?
Yes.
That's what we're doing?
Uh, it's actually asphalt and ground.
Okay, so this is the one that gets in the bottom of your cars and chip windows?
It can.
That's what, everybody's looking, go dang, man, is it gonna chip my windows and I'm gonna have to get tar remover? Now, real quick, let's go to the map. We're talking, you said twenty-two miles? Yeah, we're, we're Americans, we don't do feet, we do miles. You know, in Texas, we do hours, how many hours is it away from Odessa? So, real quickly, I'm looking at the map, it's color coded, what are we looking that's gonna get, gonna get done? Everybody wants to know because these are the roads they're gonna, they're going to avoid as they're taking their kids to school.
You know, I didn't call out the road names?
Yeah, well, well, here we're looking at a color code, so the ones that you have in red, are those the ones that we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, so, can you give us those major roads?
Uh, yes, so it's, uh, eighty-seventh Street, down, uh, I think it's, uh,
Yeah, up to the north, I recognize those.
Eighty-seven down, uh,
Is that Grandview?
Uh, Grandview.
JBS?
I think Tanglewood.
But Tanglewood?
And, yes, and JBS, and north of actually Forty-second Street. On the south side, we have Big Street, I think this is Murphy's, South Dixie. And, um, on the east side, we have Rockaway. We have Crest Ramonas, uh, on the east side, I think it is, and on the south side, it's, uh, the Compostel area, we have Pampado, this is in Dr. Joe. And we have, uh, Roanoke and, uh, Locking and Forward, and so on and so on.
Okay. We're gonna get calls on the roads are not being done, so this is why we needed to have everybody see what roads are being done.
Yvonne?
I attached this, uh, history, uh, last ten years hi- history map, you can, you can see what was done in the last ten years. With the color coding.
Now, we do this annually, right?
Yes.
Okay, so then we'll rotate for roads next year.
Chris, your district's the, the safe one. No rock chips in that one.
This would be a one-year project then?
It's okay, man, it's,
One-year project.
They're just falling apart, they're chipping their own.
One-year project.
It is, uh, late May, uh, in, in June, July, I guess, before the school starts.
Okay.
Yvonne, to your knowledge, have we ever used this company before?
Yes.
Okay, so the quality of their work is?
I would say probably last twenty, I can count it actually.
This is the great seal coat project for twenty-four.
Probably last fifteen years.
Thank you.
So, but, Yvonne, I'm, I'm just curious, I, I don't remember us doing anything last year, did we, did we seal coat anything last year?
Yes.
Yeah, we did?
We do it every year. We didn't skip anything for last thirty-four years.
Fifty-second.
Yeah, they went right down my road.
Yep. Maybe that's why I didn't see. Any other questions, discussion? May I have consensus to move forward? All right, thank you, sir. We move on to item eight, discuss your approval allocation for additional funds from the contingency account for the project account for the water treatment plant, Mr. Niles.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. So, over the past eighteen months, the general contractor for the water treatment rehab project, Garnet Construction, has submitted a total of twenty-five change orders totaling one million nine hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars. The budgeted owner allowance for the original budget for the project was set at two million dollars. Therefore, we need to allocate an additional two million dollars from the initial contingency funds to the budget account to help cover the additional change orders and the extension of the engineering contract with Corolla Engineers, which will probably be exhausted by November of twenty twenty-four. This is based on current project delays and the expected completion date of March of twenty twenty-five. The current balance in the contingency fund account is twelve million nine hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars. Most of the owner allowance depletions were from large unforeseen changes and price increases. This list consists of, but not limited to, concrete demolition and surface repairs at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, gear changes to clarify design number three for two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, changes to the raw water tie-in with CRMWD for two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, influent change supports that were leaking for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, price increase on stainless steel pipe, four hundred and ten thousand dollars, firewall changes that were required by the IT department for a hundred and seven thousand dollars, and adding ultrasonic switches to each filter, which they had float switches that are no longer available, for two hundred and one thousand dollars. The request for the additional two million dollars to the budget is to ensure adequate funds for any additional change orders and the ability to maintain engineering oversight on the project to completion.
Council, we have any questions? So, the, the twelve million dollars that's left is after we take out the, the two?
No, you'll have ten.
You have ten, just making sure I'm clear on it, yeah. The difference will be ten, ten nine fifty-four.
Kevin, after these, um, are taken care of, the list here, what would be the next Achilles' heel that's on your radar that?
I don't see any major unforeseen change orders coming.
Good, really, wonderful.
Uh, the biggest one will be the extension of the engineering contract, again, because the original completion date of the treatment facility was supposed to be in October, November of twenty twenty-four, and because of the delays and the issues that we've encountered, that's been extended. So the contract with Corolla is gonna have to be extended to make sure that we have engineering oversight until completion.
When is their contract, uh?
They think they can stretch the funds out until about November, by then the funds will be exhausted.
Yeah, this November.
That's correct.
So, can we get them to take a look at what's gonna be replaced and make sure we could get the parts now before?
We can have that discussion, again, a lot of this is just, a lot of these change orders, the initial twenty-five is because it was a rehab project, not a new project. So these were unforeseen issues when they started opening up the can, basically.
Yeah.
Now that the, everything's been exposed, we know what we're dealing with, there might be a few changes here and there, uh, as far as like electrical gearbox is, uh, but I don't see any other major change orders. Yeah, the request for two million dollars is just to make sure that we have enough money in the budget to cover anything that happens between now and the completion date.
Yeah, when, when, when everyone toured the, uh, the facility, um, there was a lot behind the wall that nobody knew about.
Right.
And I think originally the project was funded about eighty-two, and I think the original request was eighty-four, if I, if I correct, I mean, it's been a while. But, uh, but I, we all knew that whatever was behind the wall, we, it was an unknown factor. Once they tore it down, we were gonna get a little bit more accuracy. Yes, sir.
No, you're right, it was, but it was asked for eighty-four, it was funded at eighty-two, it's with two million can set aside for change orders, which obviously didn't last.
I think we had a, we had an idea about six months ago that this was coming, and we just needed to see where we're at. So, uh, I think this is still within the realm of, uh, us coming into, in, on time, well, not on time, but in budget with the, the eighty-four that was, uh, like Corillo actually projected. It was staffed in, it said, they pushed it down to, uh, the two million, and now we're seeing, and we, we heard this, uh, last year, so. I don't think this is much of a surprise, no, it's just making sure that we're covered, to try to get us to March of twenty, twenty-five to get a, to get a completion date. I don't think this is a real, uh, extreme request, it's just normal, you're always gonna have delays and unknown factors. If you have any other discussion, I'll ask for a contingency move forward. Yes. Mr. Niles, thank you.
Uh-huh.
We're gonna, oh, now we're coming into the popular stuff, this is Mr. Popular here in Odessa. Uh, item nine, discuss, uh, revision of the ordinance of section, uh, thirteen dash four dash twelve for charges of collection and disposal, Mr. Rodriguez.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. Uh, here to discuss and, and consider the, uh, revisions on section, uh, thirteen four twelve, charges for collection and disposal, update the fees and the share rate renovat- uh, revisions. Uh, right now, uh, on the curbside customers, rollout customers, uh, the first container is issued by the city at no charge. The second and third, if they request an additional, it, uh, will be an eight-dollar fee. Uh, that's to consider, uh, with the council and, and hopefully rec- and recommend. Right now, if a customer requests an additional cart, it's a one-time eighty-five-dollar fee, one-time eighty-five dollars. So with this, and this is standard, uh, statewide, we're probably the only ones that are just doing a one-time fee. So I think eight dollars is, is a fair amount. Uh, mid and this five, uh, the, the larger municipalities are ten to fifteen, twenty dollars per cart.
This is for single-family residential accounts?
Yes, yes, sir. Uh, right now, we have about nine thousand carts right there in the field right now, and about fifty percent right now have two or more carts at eighty-five dollars one time, so I think, uh, an eight-dollar fee was suffice.
So the eight dollars isn't a recurring per month?
It'll be a reoccurring fee, yes, sir.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be added to the, to the monthly fee of twenty-three eighteen.
Yeah, well, yeah, because when you're saying eight dollar one time?
Well, eighty-five dollars was, was a one-time fee.
Yeah.
And this is an eight-dollar reoccurring fee on your solid waste bill.
So, single family for two containers would be thirty-one eighteen per month?
Well, no, for, for two, yes.
Because right now, single is twenty-three eighteen, you're going up eight dollars. Any, and anything additional that will be another eight dollars.
Eight dollars, reoccurring fee, yes, sir.
Okay.
And believe me, a lot of residents, myself included, I have a rollout cart, y- one or two, it's, it's, it's good, especially with a family of four.
So then, in, in, in this section, everything that's in blue, additional cart, you're limited to per customer?
Yes, sir, limit to per cus- total of three, of course, with the one that the city provides, and then the two additional if the customer requests.
So they can go up to, to three if they wish?
Total of three, yes, sir.
What about the, uh, what are we adj- adjusting in the light commercial?
Nothing, it's just the wording, sir, uh,
So you're just taking shared container out?
Yes, sir, the shared containers, uh, any can, any commercial account in the county will no longer be able to share.
Okay.
They must have or pay for their own dumpster. Now, within the city limits, uh, I will allow, solid waste will allow the, uh, three-yard container to be shared.
Okay.
Four-yard containers, no more, uh, will not be, uh, they will not be allowed to share.
And you're doing that, and you're adding for light commercial?
Yes, sir.
And then you're moving forward, um, that is a forty-five, forty-five fifty-one per month?
Yes, sir. The forty-five, uh, will share, yes, sir, three-yard container only.
Okay, you're taking out commercial customers that have separate accounts, make sure a container, you're taking all that out?
Yes, sir.
And you were charging fifty-nine, fifty-nine forty-two for that, so that no longer exists?
Correct.
That's for a four-yard container, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And also another revision will be on the non-residential buildings, the minimum charge.
Yeah, I'm seeing that, non-residential building, nonprofit, uh, religious minimum charge?
Of twenty-eight fifty-five.
Yeah, twenty-eight fifty-five.
We have, we do have some, uh, some non-religious buildings here in town, uh, that meet just once a week, very small churches. Sometimes they, uh, they, they're calling, they don't wanna trash them, sir, they, they don't generate them, we're stressing out. But there still has to be a minimum charge on the ordinance, of the twenty-eight fifty-five.
So you're adjusting rates and then cleaning up language?
Yes, sir. On section F, on the extra service, temporary service, I added language under on the go-backs, that's a term we use in the solid waste industry as far as going back to, uh, to service a container that was blocked, skipped, or it was too heavy to pick up. If the customer calls, we'll go back, but there'll be an additional charge.
Okay. Council, any, uh, discussion? Any on the language? Anything on the containers?
I just had a, a question.
Yes, sir.
With the, um, residential homes that are going up in Odessa for your containers, the inventory that you have and stuff, and for, in containers that you have in reserve for all these new homes, how, how many do we have? I mean, do we have hundreds or?
Right now, I have,
Do you have them as needed or?
I have about nine hundred in inventory right now.
Nine hundred?
I'm about to order about another thousand, yes, sir. I know there's houses north of one hundred street that are being built right now, there's like four or five houses going up right now, so it's, yeah.
You project out what you see and then?
Yes, sir.
Make the, okay, excellent.
Yes, sir. So, uh, last year I ordered twelve hundred, so we might have to order a little bit more now, so the budgets are growing. Any questions, sir?
Council, any questions? Have a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes. Adopt the changes, okay. We're gonna go ahead and move on to item nine, discuss revision of ordinance, section thirteen dash four, two dash twelve, charges for collection and disposal. No, yes, right?
We just did that.
We just did it.
We just did that. Now, the next one's, discuss bid awards for recycling, Mr. Rodriguez, go ahead.
Yes, a, uh, a bid was, was put out to the public, uh, to, to accept all recyclables from the recycle center, the time machine. Uh, we got one bid that was turned in, and that was from Diamondback Recycling Facility here in Odessa. Uh, I re- we, the, the, the bid was reviewed and everything was, uh, they met requirements. Uh, so, uh, the requirement's gonna be sixty thousand a year, five thousand dollars a month, uh, and with a tipping fee of thirty-five dollars and thirty-two cents a ton. So, uh, the facility is here in Odessa, it's off eight sixty-six.
Now, my change of what we have been having for the last thirty years?
Yeah, and it's, yeah.
I think that that was going up two thousand dollars, it was going up to seven thousand dollars.
It was going up to seven thousand when the last company had it, so now it's, uh,
And, but we don't have it in our, this is the deal.
We would do the hauling to the recycle center up Diamondback, if the bid is awarded and approved.
Yeah, well, we were doing that in previous?
No, sir.
We weren't doing that, so this is something that's changing?
Yes, it is, total of change, yes, sir.
Council, any discussion on this item? All right, do we have consensus to move forward?
Yes, sir.
All right, sounds good, Mr. Rodriguez.
That's all for you.
All right, thank you very much. Item eleven, discuss the, uh, creation of the office of the city marshal for Odessa Municipal Court. Who is presenting on this one?
Mayor, Judge Martin is here and Leah is here, but I told Judge Martin that I would actually present for him.
Judge, thank you, this is your, thank you for being here, I don't think you've visited us before.
Uh, not at all.
Okay. Everybody knows this is our new, uh, presiding municipal court judge, out of San Antonio, Texas. We apologize and we thank you for here, being here in Odessa, Texas. You've gotta get out, you, you, I'm sure you acclimated by now.
Uh, get there.
Mr. George, go right ahead.
Yes, sir, uh, so what we have is nineteen eighty-three, before the city of Odessa had a city marshals division. And what we wanna do is go back to a city marshals division, which will get rid of the warrant division. Uh, so the city marshal will actually be doing bailiff duties, uh, so we can start trying cases. And I believe it'll be under the direction of Leah, is that correct? The municipal court director. And I think that's it. And then, of course, it is changing the ordinance, so it will be on here in a couple of weeks.
I was reading the package, and so will that, will Leah be the responsible person in, uh, hiring the, uh, the marshal?
That is my understanding, is that, is that, is that what we, yeah? And, and Mayor, Council, she has a broke, a broke Achilles' heel. So she's kinda hobbling around.
No, 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 we, you know what, we wanna, we wanna, we wanna stay within our liability, go ahead, just stay within our, we got risk management in the house, so I'm getting the evil eye, like, no, don't have her come up.
The greatest benefit is it allows, um, the city, uh, marshals division, most large cities our size or larger would have a marshals division versus a warrant division because it extends our jurisdiction so that we can serve and process in either county, Midland County or Odessa County, um, and, and not just within city limits. So it, it gives us a little more, um, you know, expands our, our surface area to where we can do more work and that might be applicable for court, especially if we get cases that are civil in nature, maybe in ETJ, national territorial jurisdiction. Um, so it's very helpful to have a marshals division that reports directly to the court.
Now, city of Odessa's in two counties.
Yes, I said, Midland County, Odessa, and Ector County, yes, sir.
So I'm gonna ask this question because I know it, I, I, I know it's coming, cause I know I was asked
Okay.
about eight months ago. Uh, if this were, council moves forward with this, does the city marshal? Could you consider constables, they're elected officials, and I didn't have the answer for that?
If they, if they would be, we would not use them to do process serving because we would have in-house people to do that, and the municipal court of the city of Odessa would get those, uh, fees, uh, they would recover those fees to go towards our own budget um, versus Ector County getting those fees.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So that, that, that would be the benefit, we have service processes, the third and fourth of the, the city of Odessa would retain versus paying an Ector County constable.
Okay. Okay. I, I, I know that question's coming, but I've, I've, I've been asked, and so.
So eventually one's county and one's city, so.
Correct.
The, yeah.
Yeah.
But never the twentys will meet, so.
Well, uh, well, the reason why the thing is, what they're asking is because the authority of the city marshal can go outside into the ETJ, we're in two counties. That's why that question's come up, sure, and I said, you know what, I don't have the answer, I said, but let me ask you.
Yes, sir.
And so, okay. Is this position a, um, commission officer?
It is.
Okay.
And we actually, um, Chief Gervais and I have spoken ahead of time, um, and they will hold the licenses for weapon training and things like that for our officers, and we will correlate and make sure we work together, so that if an incident occurs, from the same building, basically, so if an incident occurs, that we're following the same protocol. So it's, it's gonna be a definite partnership to make sure that we align with OPD's policies.
And, yeah, go ahead. And the vehicle, that they're gonna be, is, is it gonna say city marshal on it, or?
It would, it would even be distinguished, and our uniforms would also be distinguished.
Okay.
And we're lucky that Judge Martin, uh, was also a licensed peace officer in his past life, so he's very experienced, um,
Side gig. There's a side gig right there.
So it's great, we have a, we have a resident expert, um, so that really does help us as well.
Thank you. So, so, Council, if we go to section seven, uh, dash three, dash three, authority and training in section two, it will, it will cover, under A and B, it's in section two, uh, it will cover the, the, uh, some of the language about what the, the requirement for the training is. Above that, section, uh, seven dash three two is also in the duties, and then, uh, in the article, uh, seven dash three is the office of the city marshal.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. So, is this something that the city council could appoint these deputy, these marshals? Or is this something that we're just going to allocate money for? Cause we allocate the judges out there for two-year terms, is this something that is gonna have a term limit on these marshals?
They would actually be hired by Leah, I believe, they would report directly to the, they would be another arm of the court, if that makes any, of, of the municipal court. If that makes any sense, for the clerk's office, to actually go out and serve and, and, and be the bailiff and everything.
Yeah, where, whereas the city of Odessa recommending the city of Odessa create a city marshals office, who will be available to and work under the direction of municipal court when it's in session, probably faith will execute the rights and process of the court. But there is language in here that it would be hired by Leah, would be under the supervi- would be under supervision of the director?
Yes.
Now, where's the, now, that's a good question, where's the funding coming for the, uh, the salaries for the, uh, because the thing is, the city marshal, but the city marshal can appoint a deputy. Okay, so, um, so under the duty, city marshal and its de- and, uh, his deputies acting under the direction of the director of the municipal court shop perform the following. Rest subpoenas, legal process, issuing out the municipal court record, execute warrants, arrest, subpoenas, legal process, direct to municipal court. And then direct other duties directed by the director of the municipal court, so, so where's the funding coming from for this?
It's, it's an FTE position, Your Honor, I'm sorry, Your Honor, we just talked to my, I can call you, Your Honor.
Habit.
Uh, don't check that, um, so, um, what is, we have two full positions already in our budget
Okay.
that have already been approved, um, the salary is gonna have to be probably looked at because we can't compete with the hourly rate, um, that's listed, and that's something that we did talk about in our, um, our city council municipal court committee meeting, we did discuss that.
Okay.
And I've got some different, um, I've got competing, six competing cities that are, and relative in the number of, of citations we tosses, we process over a hundred thousand tickets a year, um, in addition to about thirty percent of that is magistration, um, which is jail arrangements, there's a lot of, a lot of jail arrangements. Um, and so that budget, um, I do have two positions already that we, we would need to look at that, or the hourly salary, but we do have two positions already listed.
All right. Let's just make those recommendations to committee, 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 to the city council.
Yes.
So, like, I just, we've been trying to fill these positions, you know, basically, for a long time, so what? I did, I'm just trying, I'm wondering where you're gonna get, get these people, I don't.
I've actually had lots of people with interest, um, just.
Really?
If we negotiate the salary, uh, is the salary. I mean, so, and often the officer makes double what the salary is that we have currently listed. So you can imagine the competition that I'm gonna experience.
Yeah.
But I talked to Midland, I'm gonna speak to the director of the Midland Court, um, and we talked about her numbers, we talked to Lovett and Megan Morello, um, and so we're looking, and San Angelo, so we're looking at some of the salaries in the areas, I can present that to our municipal court committee and let them present it to councilor. Um, the recommendations, so I do have that in the works right now.
Okay.
Leo, would the, would the, um, city marshal, our deputy, would that also be relieving the problem and satisfying the need for bailiff?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hey, okay, great.
For all court needs.
Great.
Yeah.
They would.
We can have in-person tra, uh, ju, uh, trials again. Uh, any other questions? Do we have a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, then, we're gonna go ahead and move past that one. We're gonna, item twelve, discuss amending the lease agreement with donating the building located at fifty-two seventeen North Dixie Boulevard to the Girl Scouts of the desert southwest. Mr. Jones.
Mayor and city council, I have Ms. Patty here.
Oh, we got backup.
I'm here, we're back.
Oh, here.
We got any cookies?
We do. You have taktanita.
Seriously?
They're hidden.
Oh, I was kidding, really? I was just joking.
Today is Girl Scouts birthday. We are a hundred and twelve years old today, so.
Happy birthday.
We had to bring you a little treat.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
So Mayor Council, we have been going back and forth, and whether or not we would want the, the city, y'all, council, if y'all would be inclined to donate the property, or just maybe, I was thinking maybe a ninety-nine-year lease. So this is something that they're here, um, I think y'all have some people that are a foundation or two that's wanting to support y'all, or, so.
Let me fill you in. So we do have, um, different grantors who will give us money to refurbish the, um, property or remodel it, and, um, after your, um, assessment, we did find asbestos in the building. So we are, we would love if the city could donate the property to us, and we could have that remediated when we can afford it, 'cause we'll do more of a capital campaign to do the whole remodel of the building and removing all of that, um, icky stuff. But, uh, if we go into a lease, then we need to just make sure that you're not going to have us, um, have to remove it within a specific amount of time. Uh, as you know, with asbestos, as long as you leave it alone, it's fine. You start playing with it, then you have to have it removed with hazmat, basically. So, um, we are prepared, if we can, um, own the building, to go ahead and do that after I can start raising funds, but it will probably take me a little bit of time to, to get that. And, uh, so that's where we're at right now. If we can't, then we, um, if, if the donation of the building, you'll want it remediated before the donation, then we will not be able to afford that.
Have you had an assessment of what the?
Um, the city did the assessment and found that, I don't know what the percentage is.
It, it was, it's a nineteen fifties building, I believe, I believe it's pretty old, so, yeah, there's quite a bit.
It, it's in the ceilings, it's in the, um, in the subfloors.
Subfloor, yeah.
And the walls. And when I talked with our contractor, the contractor let me know that, um, an easy solution, because the lighting is our biggest problem in the building, we really need to redo the lighting, but, um, he can go ahead and do drop-down ceilings and not touch that affected area and still rewire, um, now, so we can at least get that portion of it, and that we can paint walls and things like that. But when it comes right down to removing any walls or doing any major work, then we will need to go ahead and, uh, get some funds together first, 'cause it'll be quite expensive.
Dan, what's the path of least resistance here?
Well, I mean, we could, if, if y'all chose to donate it to them, we could do that. But the path of least resistance is to offer them a ninety-nine-year lease for one dollar, something like that. One dollar, ninety-nine years, and let them make whatever modifications they'd like to make.
We, we have to put in there some kind of clause that we don't require them to remede, to remediate the asbestos within a year or two?
No, I mean, that, what we would do is if, if, if they were to, let's say, five years down the road, y'all were to say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna start tearing walls down, then you need to remediate it. But in the meantime, they would not need to remediate. We could, we could work something out.
Well, then we'll need to discuss on who is, if you're owning the building, who is doing that remediation at that point? Is it the city, or is it the Girl Scouts?
Yeah.
Because at that point, we're gonna be putting a very large amount of money into a building we do not own.
Right.
And that, my board of directors will probably not be happy with.
And then, that may be a, a time that you come back and say, okay, now I want you to donate the building. And that may be something, you know, y'all willing to do.
Well, let me ask you, what, 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 what are you seeking here? Are you seeking the donation versus the?
I'm seeking the donation. If we can get the donation, then I can start planning and putting the time and money into it. If we go with the ninety-nine-year lease, then at that point, we need to go ahead and discuss with the board on what, um, what we can do, because financially, putting that amount of money into a building we don't own is not something that the board of directors is willing to do. So, we're, we're then stuck with the walls just the way they are, and the rooms the way they are, and the lighting and all of that. So, the donation would be the very best for us, because then we own it, and I can convince my board to go ahead and start doing the capital campaigns needed to go ahead and remodel and put the few hundred thousand dollars into the building that's gonna need.
How many, how many years have you been there right now?
We've been in there since nineteen eighty-six. Nineteen eighty-six, when, um, the city actually obtained the building. Before that, it was with another company, and then right afterwards, we went in. So we've been handling all of the fees for repairs, all the insurances, and anything that the building has needed since nineteen eighty-six.
What is the current value of that property, do you know? You may have already mentioned it now.
I do not have the current value.
What's the, uh, we have the address here.
Yeah, we can pull it up.
We can pull it up. So I'm asking the team to, they've talked to, uh, risk management, that's what they're having right now.
Perfect.
We can decide in a couple of days.
To give us a few minutes.
I'm not Denise Swanner. We are discussing, it'll probably need to be leased. We will take and get risk management to explore what we need to do to help everybody with liability across the board, and we'll do one or the other. You're gonna.
Sounds good.
It, it sounds like, if I had wood, I'd knock on it. It sounds like you're gonna have a building, but let us do some checking on the liability piece.
All right, wonderful.
And, and Mayor Council, if y'all remember the Gertrude Bruce Building?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we did that for the Black Cultural Council, I believe, with Ms. Attenport. So we could do something similar there. Um, and, you know, that's something y'all would be inclined to do, to lease it to them.
Yeah, let, you know, let's give, give, give the council the option of going down the both paths.
Let me, let me do a little, uh, explanation why we're looking at leases. In state law, municipalities are told what they can do with their money. They're not told what they cannot do with their money. And municipalities can spend money for a municipal or public purpose. If we donate something, and this gets into something that we'll get in tonight, too, tonight, but if we donate something, then these ladies are gonna have to have it open to the public.
Open to the public, yeah.
Oh, that's true.
But if, if they, if you lease it from us, then it's just the Girl Scouts. But if you, but if you, if we donate it, and let's say, I wanna come there and I wanna have, uh, whatever, the ball-headed get-together, me and Mr. Thompson wanna come, and, uh, and so you would have to lease it, you'd have to let us use it.
Well, we would rent it to you.
Yeah.
As long as you don't smoke, have alcohol, or follow the rules.
Well, that's what we wanna do, is smoke and, and marinate ice cubes.
Well, then we'll show you a wonderful smoking area right outside the building.
And it, it's, I know it sounds like splitting hairs, but it's, it's to keep everything legal.
Yeah.
'Cause the last thing that I would want to have happen is we say, we're gonna donate it to you. You go in and you make all kinds of repairs and things are great, and then we're sued for donating it to you.
Got it.
And we've gotta take it back. Now, we've got a better building, but you've got nothing.
Right.
So we're, we're, wanna make sure that it's completely solid.
Um, my question, Dan, is, to you, is back to the liability issue. If we're gonna donate something that's got an asbestos hazard, why, why wouldn't we be better off remed, remediating it before we donate it? I don't know what the cost would be, but. And, and it may be that y'all may want us to remediate it bef, let them move out, then remediate, then let them lease it. I, I, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's.
They don't know what that's gonna cost, though.
I don't know either.
Oh, and you know, yeah.
If it, the city will be extremely.
It'll be extremely high.
Yeah.
But so long as anything's not busted or anything like that, that's best, it's a spot.
Right.
Okay.
Right. There are some things that we can do to the building without, um, having to go into the remediation and still fixing some of the problems we have.
Yeah.
So we can do that. On, on a lease, we'll still be able to go, do that, and we'll be able to get the lighting at least fixed and resolved.
Well, we'll get to the end, the destination that you're seeking. We just wanna make sure that, you know, it doesn't affect you guys in the end, keeps the city legal.
Yeah.
Exactly. We appreciate that.
And, and I guess I, I misspoke when I said, what's the path of least resistance? It's a wandering path.
I understand it completely. I live that world also. All right, thank you very much.
But the lease would be.
We have a consensus to have staff, city manager, and city attorney, and with risk management, uh, to, uh, find that, that solution for us.
A happy zone.
Lease versus donation, donation versus lease, and then bring it back when you guys are ready.
All right.
We have a consensus for that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate you. And we, you're gonna be back at six?
Yes, we will be back at six.
Okay. Item thirteen, discuss the newfound issues with the old fire station number six presented by Town and Country. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, Council, I have, uh, Ms. Megan Prado here, and, uh, so, you know, she was awarded the bid here a couple of weeks ago, and then they went out, and Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, but you, y'all went out, you hired a roof guy. He came out and he's like, it needs a new roof.
Yes, sir.
And so I'm, I'm assuming she's gonna ask y'all to, this is y'all's decision, to offset what they're paying the three fifty for, for the cost of the roof, or, don't let me speak for you, go ahead.
Okay, so I guess the original offer was four hundred. We learned of the roof situation, and then that's when we lowered, lowered it to three fifty. Um, I guess, I think the issue's coming with the impact fees being rolled into that?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's what it, Joe Tucker, we worked out to where it would be fair that the impact fees would be in the fifty thousand and the four hundred, I think, is what they.
In the four hundred.
Yeah.
So I guess, I mean.
'Cause I can't waive in, we can't waive the impact fees.
Right, I under, I under.
We can't.
Yeah, no, I get that, I understand. Um, so is it just at being at three fifty is the issue with the impact fees in there?
No, it's.
I have no idea what you guys are talking about.
Yeah.
We, you know, you guys are having a conversation.
We're all looking at each other, so. Three, three fifty is what you bid.
Yes, sir.
Three fifty is what you bid.
Right, with the, um, impact fees included in the three fifty?
No, they were, they're above.
On top of it.
On top of it, yes. You have to pay impact fees.
Okay.
The four hundred would have included the impact fees in it.
Yes.
Right.
But since it's three fifty, now it's.
Let me ask you a question. Did y'all put a bid at three twenty, tw, three twenty-nine?
No, sir.
Okay, there, well, when, when that thing was presented, there was two, there was two, two prices on it.
It was three fifty. John Harridge's fee was out of that, and that became down to thirty-one.
I'm aware of that.
Yes, sir.
But I know that was a three twenty-nine, and three fifty was a percentage. I know that for a fact.
Yes, sir.
I was just trying to be nice about it.
Yes.
I believe the two, the first one was.
Three twenty was actually the lone amount.
Mm-hmm.
Contract price was four hundred.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's the first time I heard the four hundred thousand.
That was the original one.
Yeah, we did, uh, it wasn't in our packet, so.
I'm sorry.
So, so what, what's the ask here?
I get, I don't know, what's the ask specifically? Go for it.
So in the initial contract, we had four hundred thousand. Uh, and the reason we did four hundred is y'all had an appraisal at five, and so we took that at face value. And then, of course, there's asbestos-containing flooring in that building that's gonna have to be remediated. Since we are doing a remodel, we don't have any way to skirt that. We got the quote for that, and it was gonna be about a hundred thousand. We actually got two quotes.
For the asbestos?
Asbestos remediation, correct. So we did a hundred thousand on that, so that's where we initially came up with four hundred. Then we met with the city. They would like, there's still a lot of unknowns, uh, they've actually looked at, possibly offering a hundred and thirty-five thousand to the neighboring landowner in order to buy some ground around that building, put in a drive-through. According to the city's assessment, roadway impact fees, by adding a drive-through, would be sixty-eight thousand. So we were aware of that, so we're like, okay, we're at four hundred thousand if we can include the sixty-eight thousand, and the impact fees is part of this. So that's where we were until we looked at the roof. And the roof guy said there was penetrations in the roof and leaking, and he said his estimate, which my guy was different, this guy, we got a quote from him, was fifty-five-five. Well, now, we're, with the roof issue, and I don't know if the city carries insurance on that, or if it's insurable, or in a standard contract, if we ever actually executed one of these and took off, we would've done inspections, but we've discovered it in advance. So I don't know if the city can negotiate on the roof, if it's insured, or if they can look at it, I don't know how that works, but that put us at a total cost of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars on top of the cost to buy the building, when you looked at impact fees, uh, asbestos remediation, and maybe replacing the flat roof on that building. And so that's kinda, that's why we came back and said, well, we're gonna lower our price to three fifty, and Dan said, we're not gonna do that, and then cover the impact fees, and we said, okay, cool. So now we're back here trying to decide, all right, how, how can we negotiate this roof? Do we move forward in a contract and everybody inspect it? And I don't, I don't know how that works. I've never done a bid process on a, on a building with a municipality, so.
Yeah.
Standard contract, if we just do the statewide form, there's a thirty-day window in there where we do inspections, negotiate, and if we can reach an agreement, great, and if we can't, everybody just walks away and it's over, uh, and we can negotiate a roof, which, I mean, everything else is more or less gonna be demoed, um, when they go into remodel, if we move forward. Um, so I think that's where we're at. The roof thing kind of caused a big, this was a fifty thousand dollar unknown, and I had another roofer look at that last Friday, and he said he thought it would be closer to ninety, but he needs access in to do probes, uh, to check for moisture. And we haven't had a lot of rain, so I don't know how successful that would be, but inside the bay where the trucks used to be parked, you could see where it looked like water had been coming down inside that bay area. But I, I don't know. So, I mean, this is kinda one of those, I didn't know how to move forward with this. It scared them, and I'm just here to help them, but I don't know, there's the city carry insurance on roofs like that.
It, it's not gonna get covered by insurance, 'cause there's no damage to it. Um, I don't know what the penetrations are, whether it's, yeah, running conduit, things of that nature. I don't know what that roofer's talking about taking for moisture. Uh, we haven't had any precipitation since, uh, what, December?
Well, the roof's old. I mean, I mean, not old, but the building's old, so who knows, it could be standing up there from previous.
So the thing is, is that, you know, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna give you any, uh, I'm not gonna give any, uh, advice on the, on, 'cause you got a wide range of fifty-five to ninety. It's a huge range.
I agree.
Um, I don't know, I don't know how we go forward, you know, what, what are our options here? Do we have options? What can be proposed here?
I mean, Mayor, I was thinking, and maybe right or wrong, is that if y'all wanted to offset, okay, they've offered three fifty, okay, we'll take three hundred for the roof or whatever. Uh, and if that's the case, if that's what y'all are inclined to do, then tonight, when you're supposed to accept, you've already accepted the three fifty, we're gonna start the, it's a municipal building site, we're gonna start this business about preparing the ordinance. You would have, need to reject the ordinance tonight, basically, and let's start all over with them.
Yeah, okay.
So that's where we're at.
The process?
That's where we're at.
Counsel, I think we need to have this discussion, uh, are we agreeable with making the, that? I mean, do we want, you know, is the council agreeable to do that? You know, well, here's the thing is, is that if we say it's fifty thousand, and you come in at ninety, you're gonna be responsible for the other forty. You know what I mean? So that, that's, that's what I'm asking. You got a fifty-five and ninety, that's a huge, uh, to, what kinda system are you gonna go back with? Are you taking down the gravel, putting back the TPO?
Yeah, so installing new sixty mil TPO to be fully adhered to existing membrane, providing install new boots, flashing, so I mean, we've got some written quoting on it.
How many square foot is it, you know? Is, is it in there?
He doesn't have it written on here. Uh, that building is pushing ten thousand. Um, which my guys, I think quote was probably more realistic, but I.
So do you, so you think it's about ten thousand square feet?
I think it's ninety-six, hundred, ninety-five and some change.
I think the real question is, if it's rejected tonight, we start it over, are you gonna come back at fifty thousand less? Or are you gonna come back at ten, at ninety thousand less?
Uh.
What do you feel good about?
I was three.
We were going about a fifty-five, so we're gonna do fifty.
Yeah. Off of the four hundred was like, three fifty is like.
Yep, but you're at three fifty now.
So you're at three fifty now.
So you would actually be at three hundred.
We would have.
Without the impact fees or the. Without the impact fees or the roof?
Well, the impact fees are on top of everything regardless.
No, so we took off the fifty for the roof.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? Like, it was originally four hundred and we took off the fifty to accommodate for the roof.
Okay.
But then you.
You're still gonna pay impact fees.
Yes, sir.
So we add the three fifty and add the sixty-eight thousand on top of whatever it ended up being.
Okay.
Or if council's inclined to let you pay three hundred for it, then you're still sixty-eight thousand for, yeah, with the roof and all that, and impact fees, gotta pay impact fees.
And then I, I'm like three sixty-eight, all in.
So we could amend the offer down to two ninety-five, which would cover fifty-five thousand for the roof and then they could, they could apply that money towards the impact fees, that would be.
Either way, you gotta pay the impact fees.
Yes.
You gotta pay impact fees, period.
And the reason why is because you're adding, uh, a component that that building's never had and that is traffic.
Yeah.
Onto a road that already is overwhelmed with traffic, so that's what that's for.
That makes sense.
And, and Megan, here's the thing. Everybody else that does business here, they've been charged impact fees. And I'm not about to say, okay, oh, sure, we'll wait, cause I, that's opening up Pandora's box. We can't waive impact fees.
No. No, I'm definitely not asking you to waive impact fees.
It is, it is what it is. Impact fees are here to stay. I hate it, but it is what it is.
Definitely pay those, definitely.
We found about a hundred page impact fee report from two thousand and twenty-one, so we've, we've pretty well researched all that process, so. The roof was the big thing that kinda, it was sort of a jab. We were learning to speak that, so.
Yeah. Well, I kinda like, I kinda like Mark's idea. I mean, this, these are, this is the best, best offer that we got. Uh, building's got a lot of issues. I think the city's rid of it, off our back, be- the better off we are. And I, I kinda like Mark's idea of the two ninety-five and then everything's, anything else is up to you.
And here's.
Kinda my thought.
Here's the thing, E-CAD has it valued at three fourteen, so you're still practically at fair market value.
Yeah.
Which we're still legal, we're still good.
Yeah, and that's, and that's where we started at, with five hundred was fair market value.
Right. Well, E-CAD's got it for three fourteen, so.
Yeah, that's pretty close. The council, we have a consensus for this, that means we'll have to take some action at six o'clock.
I'm inclined on it. I think it's a reasonable to do, but we have to hold the line somewhere after this point.
Uh, mayor and council, so what I would recommend you do is at six, you reject it. Because that is, then basically, Wayne, you're gonna need to get with John Harriage and amend it to two ninety-five, three hundred, whatever. And then next two weeks from now, we're gonna have to accept it again. And then from there, we'll have, two weeks after that, we'll do the ordinance. So you're, you're gonna be probably six weeks or so behind on this, but it, it should be able to work out, if that's what they wanna do.
So we couldn't, we couldn't just amend the ordinance tonight to put, without a contract?
No, we, we need to get the contract.
They need to get there.
Yeah, that's right.
We need to, yeah, yes, sir, we need to get the contract, get it, get it signed, sealed, delivered.
We gotta reject the bid.
Yeah. Okay, and that's what we're gonna do a couple, we'll do that in a couple of weeks from now.
So they're gonna go ahead and reject the initial bid and then we're gonna resubmit a new offer at two ninety-five that they will then bring back to another meeting.
Okay, is there any way that we won't get it if we reject? Is that an option?
Well, that's what I was.
Yeah.
We can, we can make no promises. It's up to them.
Okay.
That's just, that's just, that's just a process that we have to get, because we can't amend it.
She was about to send me to my office now.
Well, she's just asking, are we open, are, are, are we?
We're not gonna resubmit to our.
Are we lending genie out of the bottle if we do this? Is there a window for somebody coming back and swoop in and be the hawk and take it away from you?
Right. And go through this whole thing, right?
Nah.
No, because, because all the, all the, the agreement's already there. They've already accepted the three fifty. So now you're just gonna adjust it to two ninety-five, three hundred, they're gonna accept it again and then we're gonna do this whole thing.
Yeah, just deduct whatever roofing cost is gonna, from the three fifty and they could bring that back to us.
Yeah, so you'll need to be back two weeks from now.
Okay, sounds good. We'll see you then.
All right, then, sounds good.
Thank you.
And I didn't bring any Girl Scout presents.
Seeing that there's no more business before the city council, I have a motion to.
I so moved.
Uh, I have a motion by council member Vasquez, second by.
Second.
Second by, uh, Mr. Cornell, all in favor of the Kidding, but saying not.
Aye.
All opposing, I'm kidding, but saying nate, motion passing, I got thrown off.
Yes, she was gone.
I would like this.